Good evening. Welcome to our City Council Work Session. It is Tuesday, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and it's five thirty P. M. So we welcome everybody that's here in person and also those that are on YouTube Live. We'd like to begin our meeting. Do we have a roll call, I think, or? Yeah, four of us.
He's here.
Yeah.
I think he's in.
All right. So we're good to go. We'd like to begin with a pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone here that would lead us in that?
I will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Montoya.
You're welcome.
You're great, amazing. All right, I would like to have an invocation. Is there an inspirational thought? Anybody willing to do that for us?
I can.
Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity, this beautiful day, for the moisture that has fallen, and pray that it will continue. We're thankful for this great city that we live in, for the opportunities that are given to us here. We're thankful for all those that work and support the residents of our city and help us to make good decisions this evening. We can be led and guided by thee. And things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Meekham. All right, discussion items. We'll lead off with the first, frontline officer and employee salary discussion. Is that Shannon?
It's me, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for having me and giving me the opportunity to come talk to you about employee wages and the things that are affecting them. This last year in two thousand twenty-one, did I bump that again?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. It's not on yours? Okay. We had a consultant come and look at our pay grades and ranges. Because of market conditions, we had outgrown our current pay scale. And actually Dennis has some copies of this, so you guys don't have to kink your necks.
Okay.
I'll give you copies of it. So he's going to give you a copy of the two thousand twenty-one salary scale that we've been using and also the two thousand twenty-two proposed salary scale. And you'll see that there is a lot more grades on the new proposed scale. And that would accommodate for some some grades at the bottom end and also at the upper end. And also to accommodate for things like that we've been talking about with public works, to make grades one, two, and three in certain positions. So it widens those scales so that we're able to accommodate for those things. So you can see now that the two thousand twenty-one scale goes from grade one to a grade thirty. The new one for the proposed two thousand twenty-two scale goes from a grade one to a grade thirty-seven, which would allow for those accommodations in there without creating a lot of pressure. So what we would like to do or move forward with is that each position would be, should be regraded. So if you, for example, if you look at grade seventeen, and I can't, let's see, a grade seventeen says twenty dollars and forty-seven cents if you look at the hourly rate. So on yours, it has the annual salary, the monthly, and then the hourly. So if you look at the hourly rate on a grade seventeen, it shows twenty dollars and forty-seven cents for a grade seventeen. So what we would, what we would want to do is make the grade seventeen an equivalent dollar amount, which would be, let's see, so a twenty-one. Right, so that one starts at, yep, so twenty forty-seven is a grade seventeen now, so we would make a twenty-one, that new grade, which is twenty dollars and ninety-four cents. Does that make sense? So everybody's grade numbers would be changing, but their ranges would stay similar. They were, the only adjustments there would be is just, just a little bit of adjustment if they, if what they're currently at is higher or lower than what, what's on these, the new range.
So.
Yes.
So you just said, so whatever, there might be a lower pay for some of these employees?
No.
So everyone would be?
Everybody will go up. They'll be equivalent, or they would go up one pay grade. We would not make anybody lower. The new grades won't affect current wages, but the ranges may be adjusted to allow for additional growth within the range. So now somebody's range may go to out a little bit farther for a higher wage. And so now the potential to make more money, if there's a potential there to make more money. Okay. Well, let's go back to that. Do you guys have any questions on that or concerns or thoughts? Are you okay to move forward with that part of it? So that's just part of what I want to discuss tonight, is this new, these new ranges.
I'm okay with the ranges, just adjusting as presented so far.
My question that came up was going to be this, so I'll wait till you go through this.
Okay, yep. So that's just the first part. That's, that's, we want to move forward with this regardless of any adjustment in wages. These are just the pay grades and the ranges. So.
And there's also my third-party consultant that would serve.
Yes. So we had Mike Swallow with Compensation Survey Systems or TechNet. He's the one that actually put that together for us, just based on what we were looking at to extend those ranges and what was out in the market actually too. So, and then, so the next part of this I want to talk about is with the craziness in the job market due to the information we're getting, you know, the people's pay scales raising and due to, you know, Salt Lake City had, had the, the big increase that was in the news. Anyway, we decided to go ahead and look at our actual pay, what, what we're, what ranges our employees are in, to see if we're comparable with the market. So in order to do that, we, in the past, we've always just selected twelve, ten to twelve cities. We try to select cities that are, number one, peer cities. We put peer cities up there, but peer cities would be cities that our employees would have no problem going and taking a job tomorrow because they don't have to travel. They don't have to, it's close to home. There's not much impact to be able to go to work at one of these cities. So those are the cities we chose as the peer cities. And then we also look at cities that have either similar population or similar budget. And so those are the cities that you will see on the other side of the screen. We'd like to look at maybe northern cities and southern cities, if there are some that are comparable. So that's what you're seeing is right here. So the, when, when I looked at the wages within the market, these are the cities that I used. Do you have any questions or comments on that? Okay. So, of course, I talked about, a little bit about the things that are actually affecting the market right now. You had, again, Salt Lake City announced that they were going to give a four to five dollar an hour increase to entry-level officers and then give, you know, signing bonuses of five thousand dollars if they could snatch them from other departments. And that has had a trickle effect. We've just been waiting, I've talked to Rod about this quite a few times, just, we know it's going to come this way, and we're actually seeing that now. You know, it started with Draper and Unified Fire, and then you see Lehigh changing their rates. And just recently, we've seen Payson change, changed their rate. So that's what's kind of sparked us to look at this and to try to make some adjustments. There's also what we were calling the Chick-fil-A effect. So that's private, private industry actually competing with our jobs. Chick-fil-A is now, you know, paying fifteen to sixteen dollars an hour, and they're offering benefits. I went to In-N-Out Burger the other day, and there was a sign on their door, the fifteen dollars an hour, and we'll pay for your dental and life insurance benefits. Costco is another one. So now we're not only competing with other cities, but we're competing with the private market because of what's happening in, in our United States of America.
In our economy.
Yes. So one other thing, just to add to that, Payson, they, we just saw posting two weeks ago that they had a starting entry-level parks maintenance worker position. It was advertised for three dollars an hour, an hour more than what we're starting ours for. So it was nineteen dollars an hour, nineteen oh four is what they were starting that at. I looked up just a couple other cities. I know Orem has had a hard time hiring right now, and their starting positions are eighteen sixty. So for some reason, Payson, and you'll kind of see this in some of the slides that I show you, they've gone way out, way out above. But we've included them in the, the survey results, but, and we'll talk about that here in just a minute. But other things impacting are just overall inflation, just everything that's going on right now. So when we did this study, a couple of things that we're finding are that the police department, of course, is behind market. I think we all kind of knew that. What we've tried to do in the past, and maybe I should have brought this up a little bit, when I was talking about the cities that we compare with, is we've tried to take all the cities that we have, knowing that some of those cities are a lot larger than us, but they are competing cities that our employees wouldn't have a problem going to. But knowing that they have higher wages than us, and they probably, you know, have bigger budgets than us, but coming up with an average, including them, and then just being right below that average is where we've kind of sat, is right below the average, knowing that we've included those, you know, larger cities in our, in our surveys. So what we're finding is the police department is below that average. Entry-level labor positions are the same and, and, well, I take that back. We're, we're right there with the entry-level labor positions. However, we are seeing that maybe this is a little bit behind and because of the private market. And we can't compete with the private market with a starting wage of fourteen, fourteen ninety-six or fourteen sixty-nine, what our current range is for a starting entry-level laborer position. So, and then we're also seeing that there's just a few outliers. We may have a, a position like a building inspector one, you know, there's a high demand for building inspectors right now. Our level two and level three were pretty comparable, but our level one, we're a little bit below. So there's a little bit, there's a few outliers that we'd like to recommend that we adjust as well. So this is kind of what you would see if I showed you every position in the city, what the survey looks like. I have to find my slide so I can look at it. I can't see Claire over there. So you'll see the police, police officer position. If you'll notice Payson, if you'll look at all of the wages, so South Ogden's forty-six thousand, Springville's forty-six thousand, Payson is actually forty-eight thousand. And you'll see this across the board with all of Payson's new, that they're, they are quite a bit higher. Well, I would say, you know, maybe two to five thousand dollars higher in their beginning and across the board in their ranges. But we have included them here. So an average would be forty-five thousand dollars. We're currently at forty-two thousand dollars for our starting range. And what I've recommended here, or we would recommend, is that we stay at market at our police department. Instead of, you know, going the below the market because of the volatility of the market out there with police officers especially, that maybe, you know, that's something to consider, that we stay at market. It's totally, you know, a, a call for you guys to make, whether we be at market, below market, above market, but I just wanted to give you the information so you could kind of see what we're looking at. Does anybody have any questions on this?
Yeah, on, I know we pay full benefits.
We do.
I don't think all cities do. Do you have those? Because that's, I mean, I'm not saying, I, I'm for raising this up, don't get me wrong, but I know that that's one of the things that keeps people here.
And that's the reason.
And I think we need to continue that, because I know when they cut benefits in the school district, it just, we can't keep teachers.
That is one of the reasons why we felt comfortable staying right below the average.
Yeah.
Is because we know that our benefits don't compare to anybody else's.
Yeah, and that's worth a lot.
Yeah.
They do to Salem and a few others.
Yeah, I know there's a couple that do.
Yeah.
And they're trying to poach our workers too.
Not very many cities pay, pay for.
But, but, yes, I agree. The hard thing is getting the individual to see that, because not everyone can see that. When your, your monthly or week, your bi-weekly check is a little bit less, even though you get those benefits. I know we, we've personally seen this in a handful of situations.
Yeah, and, and I agree, I agree. I'm, I am in support. I just, we need to be aware that, that as the cost of benefits increase, that we are also going to see an internal ripple effect, right, of a, a potential time when we may no longer be able to provide full benefits. But I would rather be ahead of the game with wages when that time comes than behind the game with wages when that time comes.
And we've had those discussions among us as well.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the things that, that we're going to explore in the new budget season, we just kind of feel like this is something that we needed to bring to you sooner because of the ripple effect and the impacts immediately, and we don't want to lose our great employees. But one of the things that we are very empathetic to is that our newest employees have the hardest time to get housing. And to them, they're typically our healthiest employees, and the benefits aren't as important to them as they are to some old geezer like me. And, and so we need, we're, we're looking at, at how we might be able to be more flexible in the new fiscal year, allowing employees to potentially choose different benefit packages or have those dollars in salary where they might qualify, have, have more of a, a little bit larger of a paycheck and qualify for more home or even to get into A home.
A home, yeah.
At this point. And so we are looking at that, but that's not really addressed in this.
Right. I'm, I'm just thinking whole picture, right?
Yes.
Which is what we have to do.
Yeah.
So, and Nick wanted to say something, I think, and I kept talking, so sorry about that.
I forgot now. It's fine. I, I, I'll ask it later. We're good.
Sorry. No other questions on this one? I just wanted to show you another example of, so this is a parks and grounds maintenance one. So this is our entry-level position that we just barely hired this position. The range was started at fourteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. We brought that person on at sixteen dollars because he could go to Costco and get a job for the same amount of money. So the other one is the entry-level public works. So these are the certified operators that work in the sewer and water. The other one is parks and grounds. We just hired this at seventeen dollars an hour. The starting range on this one is sixteen forty-one. So we brought him in at seventeen. Okay. So, but like I said, the private market can, trying to compete with the private market with those kind of wages is, is becoming harder and harder. So in this instance, if you look, the, the, the average for a parks and grounds maintenance is thirty-one thousand dollars, thirty-one four fourteen. Where we came in is thirty thousand dollars. But, but a recommendation would maybe to bring that up over what the market is saying because of what's going on with the economy right now, that, that we won't be able to hire at fourteen dollars an hour, fourteen sixty an hour, or even fifteen dollars an hour.
So I, I think labor is going to continue to become a bigger and bigger challenge. I know that that's the biggest challenge that the, the growers in the area are facing, is labor for a variety of different reasons on different levels, none of which we have control over, but, but I, I think that we're, we're starting to see it in government employees. And it's, I mean, people aren't going to be happy if they can't flush their toilet, and they're not going to be happy if their garbage isn't picked up, and they're not going to be happy if the parks are full of weeds and their kids don't have any activities to sign up for to play Little League or soccer, or if they turn on their water and nothing clean comes out.
Right.
So to have quality staff and to do the very best we can to support them and take care of them is important to me.
And that's, I mean, that's one of the reasons why, you know, the recommendation would be maybe to go a little bit higher than what market is saying on these positions to, to make it more comparable to what private market is paying for entry-level, come flip a hamburger. Any questions on this? What are your thoughts on that? Do you agree with that? Do you?
Agree with raising the?
Bringing it above market on this one?
Yeah, I think, I think the biggest thing we're going to see with, with small businesses is businesses not being able to pay for labor and businesses shutting down. This is something I deal with all the time. We've had to increase our stuff all year long, and it's literally months apart. We've had to increase just, the hope is to pay more and get a better employee. For us, it's not necessarily worked that well. I think we have gotten better employees. I don't know where all the employees are going that aren't working, but I think we have to do this. And if you break this down per hour, it's, I don't think it's that big of an increase.
So the parks and grounds maintenance at, at that grade seventeen would start at sixteen ninety-six an hour.
Yeah.
And the public works would start at seventeen eighty-eight. And we can always adjust that and go down one grade, and I can tell you what that is to kind of, you know, if you think that's a little high to bring in entry level, if you want to be right at, you know, private market, we can, we can look at that too.
No, I, I, I definitely don't want to. I would lean on you guys who've studied that out a little bit more. It's not just about the money, and I think the, the wage being a little bit higher and the benefits being a little bit higher. And I do strongly believe our directors are better than anyone else. I do believe you'll have a better work environment here. I do believe we're better across the board. And I think it all will factor in. But if you can't get someone to look at the job, then it does us no good.
Yeah, and that's where, that's where we're seeing the, where we're hurting is the entry-level positions.
Yeah.
The entry-level police officers, the entry-level, while police, it's kind of, it kind of goes all the way up through the ranks when you, when you look at what everybody's done throughout the state. But for, it's, it's the entry-level positions with public works and, and secretarial and that kind of stuff.
So this, this, of course, changes everybody's wage, right, that we currently have employed?
That, what you're holding right there changes their range, not their wage. So it kind of moves where they would be.
Right, but it will bump it up.
It'll give them more growth opportunity. And there's a second part of this is actually changing wages.
So that was my question, is when we do that, do we have the budget for that? And how much of an increase is it from where our current budget is?
So Shannon will get into that, and then I'll get into the budget side. But I wanted to jump into, to one other thing without pointing fingers or anything like that. But Councilman Miller just, just alluded to something that's really quite important, and that is we, we do have a, a really great working environment. We don't want to, we don't want to bank on that too much, because at the end of the day, people have to pay their, pay their bills. But your Salt Lakes of the world are paying the premium because of the many, many issues they have with that department. So they have to compensate. Even with that said, it draws other police officers from other departments, and that creates a ripple effect all the way through. Likewise, we might have neighboring cities that might have other issues that, for which they, they might need to compensate. We need to compensate too, to keep market average, but we, I don't think we have the issues that maybe other cities have like Salt Lake, where we have to compensate for deficiencies in the work environment.
Right.
Because that's, that's kind of like two reasons why it's up high.
Yeah. And I, I agree with everything that Nick said, including that we have the best directors, the, the most well-educated, trained, competent. My understanding is that directors this year would not be getting the increase. Is that, is that correct?
I may get that too in the recommendations right here. I just switched the slides, so.
Oh, sorry, I hadn't seen that yet. My son was saying he's ready for a ride, but his dad is picking him up tonight, so I was.
So there's different things. We have, we have a standard cost of living that affects all employees. We have merit increases that are based on performance, whatnot. But this is completely outside of our normal purview. This is just a market comparison, and the intent of this is to not affect directors, but really to affect at the, the frontline level.
Where we're seeing it hard to hire.
Yeah, and so.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to put the cart before the horse.
The, the directors or anything are not, they, they still have the other two opportunities that are normal in the vulnerable budget process.
Yeah, and my, my point was just that they have a better working environment, and their supervisors and their trainers and whatnot is a better position than others. But if they're not, if, if, if they aren't interested in applying for a job, because unfortunately, it is, I have to make X amount of money to cover these bills, and if our wage is fourteen fifty, you're absolutely right. They will go to Chick-fil-A over us.
Yeah.
Any day of the week, and we've seen this on the private side ourselves.
Just to make ends meet.
Yeah.
Yeah. So just based on the results of everything that we've looked at over the last couple of weeks, this is what we would recommend, and any of this can be changed. We want your input on this. So entry-level laborer positions should be adjusted up to two dollars and fifty cents an hour. So that's where you're going to see that increase from fourteen sixty-nine to, you know, sixteen ninety-six an hour. So, and of course, that, that affects the, the guy that we just hired at sixteen. Now if we increase the range to sixteen ninety-six, he's not even on the range. So now we need to bring him on the range and then increase him to where he was on the range. So it may take, you know, two dollars, two dollars and fifty cents. We haven't delved so deep into that we know exact numbers. We just have roundabout numbers to give you. Which that also would move up the chain too. So you have your entry level. It may move to your maintenance guy's entry level. Those, those, those positions would be affected by that. The police department, entry and mid-level positions should be adjusted, a dollar to a dollar fifty. So that's kind of what we're seeing there. The entry level more so on the dollar fifty side. The mid, the mid-level would be more like a dollar. Our ranges are pretty close when you look at those, those upper-end positions, like your corporal and your sergeant. It's the entry-level master officers and, and entry-level officer that you're seeing the little bit of discrepancy in.
So, so for clarification, on the previous slides, I saw that we're, we're, we're very competitive with other cities. But as our entry-level officer increases, then the, the mid-range increases a little bit. Is there still enough of a gap between those two, or that, that gap's going to get a little bit smaller, right?
There is, based on the, the, what the market's saying, there is a little bit, there is going to be still that little bit of wiggle room.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because the, the, the next thing is we don't want employees progressing with more responsibility and other things.
And nowhere to go.
Well, yeah, that, but even just for a little bit of an increase, we still have to be something for them to get to, because why would we take on more responsibility for only one more dollar an hour?
So there's definitely a balance between trying to get those, you know, increase the labor pool and trying to balance the budget with being top-heavy, right? And so if you, if you keep the top where it's at, and you're bringing all of this into the bottom, it creates that compression issue. And so that's one reason why you look at what can we do with the mid-level so that there is a, there's still a gap there between those. There's incentive to progress within your career, get the additional trainings, get, you know, try to move up within the organization. And so we're trying to relieve that compression a little bit by still looking at the mid-level, but as I said, trying to hold that, that top tier with recognizing we still have to do this all within the budget, as has been mentioned already.
Right, and you're correct. When, when we're saying we want to move this to a grade seventeen, which is, you know, a couple of grades above where the new grade would be to, to make it competitive in the market, then you have to look at all the positions higher and make sure that they've moved up as well and that we still have. But with this new range and we've got a, a, now one to thirty-seven, we have some wiggle room within that.
But are we competing at the upper levels too with other cities?
So, yeah.
Or maybe we need to look at raising them too, because?
So what we, what we've looked at, and I don't have any examples of any director positions.
In the presentation.
In the presentation tonight, but I do have them if you wanted to come see them. Um, what we're seeing is most are pretty comparable. There, I think there's two that uh need to be adjusted as far as their range needs to move up, but we're, we're looking at, we want to make a recommendation that we move their ranges, however, we don't move their pay right now. So we'll move their ranges and give them more potential to make more money, so it's competitive with the market, but we're not moving their actuals anywhere right now.
Okay.
I think it's probably important to note, too, that there's really three aspects. There's the range, which is your potential. There's the actual where you're in the range. And then historically, um, and this is something that we're not really addressing in this, but we will in future budgets, is something that, that Chief Hurst has brought up from time to time, and that is in our previous salary surveys and, and council um salary committees and, and all that type of thing, we've, we've wanted to prog- progress employees through their range on a certain trajectory, certain timeframe, so long as they're performing well and they're growing in their duties and all that type of thing. And so you might have their, their range and their years of service, and they progress kind of on a, a diagonal path there. But in all reality, when a new employee is new, they don't have a lot of experience. But by the time they've hit a couple of years as a, as an officer, two, three years, and they've got that experience, they're really performing pretty well at the same level as officers who've, who've been there. Maybe they don't have the institutional knowledge or the community and whatnot, but they're, they're doing the same duties. And there ought to be consideration of not taking a linear path, but taking a more aggressive approach within the range to bring them up more quickly and then flatten out that curve over time. So that, that brings them up more, which is a different component altogether from where the range is and where they are in the range, but it, it's the trajectory. Um, but that, again, is not addressed in this, but something to consider.
Historically, we've tried uh because of, you know, budget constraints, or, you know, we're a smaller city, we've said, you know, uh, an employee should get to midpoint at nine years and then to maximum. If they were in the exact same job for eighteen years, they should be at their max. Um, that's a pretty slow progression. I know Spanish Fork, uh, they get their people to midpoint at five years. Um, so that's what, that's what he's talking about, and then they slow it down on the back end. Um, so where did I get to? Um, police department entry and mid-levels would be uh uh adjusted a dollar to a dollar fifty. Other entry level positions adjusted by a dollar. So that's like your um, your EIT, your entry level EIT, um. Um, I'm trying to think of someone. Oh, the clerks, uh, your, oh, your administrative staff, uh, your administrative entry level staff. Same, same thing with, you know, this, we're, we're bringing them on at thirteen dollars an hour. Um, and so the same kind of concept is they could go out in the private market and, and um find a job just as easy. Um, and then outlier positions, just evaluated case by case. That would be like your building inspector that I was talking about. The other one I was looking at uh earlier was the planner. Uh, there's just a little bit of a discrepancy in his range that maybe we, we need to move him up, which would in- include an increase because we'd wanna, you know, put him back maybe in the same uh percentage of that new scale that he's in, in the old scale. Um, and then uh just due to the volatile mark, the volatility of the market, just making, making sure that we look at this again before the new budget year, and if we need to make any further adjustments, that we put those into the budget um next year. So if, if we're seeing that the police department is continuing to raise, then, you know, we, we accommodate for that in the next year's budget.
Rather, yeah, rather than jump into the pool with everything all at once to ease into it.
Yes, just being conservative right now of what we're seeing and then looking at it again. We'd, we'd hate to, you know, jump and say, well, we wanna be competitive with Payson, and we're gonna include our, or increase everybody four dollars an hour, and then all of a sudden, nobody else does it, and we just wanna be conservative and, 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 and look at those increases uh that we can do right now to make them competitive in the market, and then look at it again come budget year.
And, and so our thought process is this, these are just recommendations. It's really you as a council that kind of set that, but you're gonna come back to the question of what can we afford? And that's what we're anticipating um having in a December fourteenth budget amendment. This is one of the major components, along with other things that the council's approved throughout the first six months of the year. And um, and with that, um, how aggressive we are is really a policy decision. That's why we wanted to bring it to you. You know, if there's certain aspects, certain areas where right, right now, we're being a little bit more aggressive with the entry level laborers because they're below what you could make at, at a fast food restaurant. And um, and the thing is, y- you walk into a situation where some of those kids are, have a hard time reading, have a hard time counting and all that, and yet we're hiring people um who need to have uh, you know, certifications in the court or, or.
Or they're just counting thousands of dollars a day. You know, they're, they're entering revenues of thousand dollars, thousands of dollars a day.
And they, they need a certain level of intelligence and expertise to be able to deal with the, the public on complex issues. Um, but the whole intent of this is, is to make an impact. The question is how aggressive you want us to be at the lowest level, and then to have a ripple effect of, of um removing the, the compression issues as we go up. But stopping before we get to the director uh level on this, this is all for the frontline employees and trying to, to deal with them.
Is it, is it okay, Mr. Mayor, if we hear from Chief Hurst?
Perhaps.
Well, I, I would just like his perspective as far as the police department and those he supervises, if, if he feels like it's enough. Like what the recommendation is, is enough, considering what he knows is happening right now.
You've got your thumb on the temperature of what's going on out there right now.
When you come up, but.
Tell us, tell us what it's like.
So on, on your way up, just to finish that thought, the how aggressive we are at the labor level, or at the police department level, or entry level positions across the board, those can each vary as directed by you, based on the input that you're receiving. So these are just looking at the, the dollars and numbers from city to city.
And before Chief Hurst speaks, just, he's seeing this information tonight for the very first time like you are, so again, we haven't worked out all the final details of, of what is actually going to happen with this, but definitely, I, I know Chief Hurst is very in, connected with what's going on out there.
Well, I just think his perspective is helpful, and Chief Lynn's perspective, he's trying to hide back there, but I think his perspective is helpful over his department, too.
As Dennis said, this is the first time I'm seeing this information, and so I don't have anything that's more recent, so I would probably uh refrain from saying anything unless you want me to do some work on it.
What are your thoughts on this? The proposed, the proposed, and yeah. Do you think, do you think that that's too low?
You, you're talking about five percent roughly, give or take, right?
Um.
We're talking about entry level. We're talking about a five percent increase. You know, I hesitate to add any opinions or anything, but I think you probably, that's probably about half of what it needs to be to make us competitive. Um, it's certainly a start, and I think maybe you should, should uh, I thi- I think Ben has the right idea. Maybe this is what you start with, and then you evaluate on a case by case and uh see what you can afford and make adjustments accordingly.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Good answer.
All right. I already made enough friends today. I'm not trying to make anymore.
That's helpful.
But I, I think, I think it goes back to, you can sit down. I think it goes uh, I didn't want you to think you was, was waiting for a response from me, cuz I, cuz I understand this, and, and uh specifically departments, uh, certain departments in our, in our city, I think this go, it's deeper than just the dollar amount. I think that certain things need to be looked at, and um, I don't wanna say relax our standards, but it's, it's not just a dollar amount. The dollar amount catches the attention, right? That's what we got them in the door, or how we got them in the door. Now, it's our job as a city to keep them here, so um, and, and each department can talk about this on their own level, and, and the directors can say their, their thoughts. Um, I like the thought process of more of the Spanish Fork, the, the quicker acceleration, and then slow down once you hit that five or six years, right? Um, it was kinda my thought, cuz that helps build your bench strength. At five years, six years, if an individual thinks I can't progress as much as I want and leaves, it's not gonna hurt to bring new, a new set of eyes or a new individual in who has a different perspective, right? Cuz times change, so I think as we go forward, you know, and the directors share some more opinions on, on just little changes. I know Chief Hurst talked about stuff a couple of years ago, and, and we've worked hard on some of it, and some of the stuff we haven't worked really hard on, but um, good conversations, right? Get to know what the employees are seeing, because um, I think we've lost employees uh who were just looking at the paycheck, the dollar amount into their check, or the dollar amount of their check each week without really seeing the back end of it. So work on that, and then my only other request would be a, a quicker acceleration for these guys, right? And, and do more of a five-year curve, right? And then you can kinda start to taper down. Assuming you can afford it.
Are you guys, just looking at this slide, are you guys comfortable with being at market with the police? Just based on what he's saying, that this is a good start, are you comfortable with being at market, or do you wanna look at increasing it to above market?
Where's ours right now?
Well, we are.
Right, it's, so we're, we're at forty-two thousand five hundred and eighty right now.
Oh, current grade, is that the one, is that the one you're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
So that's where we currently are.
Okay.
Now, we're recommending, based on the market, that it moves to forty-five thousand nine hundred seven, because if you look at the top number, the forty uh five thousand three forty-four, that's what the average of the market is. Now, that's if we wanna be right at market, cuz those forty-five, three forty-four and forty-five nine oh seven, that's right at market. If you wanna be above market, then we go to a grade twenty-three, which you can look on your sheet and see what a grade twenty-three is hourly. Or
The proposed one?
Yes, the proposed one.
That's almost exactly where Payson is.
Yep, so it just depends. This can be per department. This, we can look at, we can look at anything, and I'm actually, what I've kinda seen is that people have taken their police department out of their whole pay structure, and they have a separate pay structure for their police department.
Do they pay full benefits in Payson?
No.
No.
So that's why I said we're, we're, we're okay with being a little bit below uh market, and we always have been when we've done one of these studies. Um, I, I recommended being right at market just because of the issue with the police department wages going up instead of below market.
If we, if we can afford it, I would be comfortable with going just a little bit above.
So one pay grade above?
As the first phase, and then take another look.
So basically, that would increase everybody. Um, instead of a dollar to a dollar fifty, that would be um two dollars to two dollars and fifty cents an hour.
So what would happen if we took the police department and had their own structure?
It, it's just a matter of budget and, and where we can uh get everything to fit. Um, it's always an opportunity cost, but there's also a, a huge cost in losing a fantastic officer and all the training that we've put into this person.
That we've invested in.
Right, so it's always weighing that, and it's just a very volatile market. Typically, it's officers, um, and your building inspectors and your um journeyman lineman, if we had a power company. Those are the three that cities really struggle with.
I wanna go back to what can we afford.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd like to, if I, if I can, I'd like to make a comment. Um, and Lynn keeps alluding to it, which is probably my biggest issue, is the budget. I, I look at those cities you have up there, and I know you can take Spanish Fork, Springville, and they have astronomical, nice tax base. They have the flexibility to do that kinda stuff. So the question is, is I have nothing wrong with where we, where we're going with this conversation, other than when we get talking about how aggressive or non-aggressive we are. To me, i- we, we still got to understand we're still Santee Quinn with, with what we have.
More limited resources.
Right.
Yeah, and that's why in, in all the other ones, besides the police department and the public works, you will see all the averages, all of the recommended grades sit below the average because of that reason. These are just ones I recommended at average because of what's going on in the market.
And I'm one hundred percent with that. I think we, I think we almost gotta go there with that. I'm just, my issue is, is it's gonna be at the budget, especially next year, when we talk about this aggressiveness. I think we need to be careful.
And this is a perpetual expense. It's not a one-time thing. It is, it will perpetuate.
Right.
Well, yeah, but and, and, and my thought process is cool, right? I, I respect that, but to you, figure it out, right? Because like, if we're losing, if we're losing these employees because of something like this, and they are looking at, when you look at forty-five nine oh seven to forty-eight three ninety-one, it's, well, it's three thousand dollars. Well, when you break it down, it's a smaller amount. So we really have to be able to figure it out with, with you guys who are studying it out and the reports and, and the directors. But we can't afford to lose this, because the, the training in office, or the, specifically the officers, because that's what I deal with the most. The amount of money that we put into them, you, when you realize we lost an officer because he could make two dollars more an hour somewhere else.
Yeah.
You, the, the hundreds of thousands of dollars, just, that's a lost cost, right?
So what is retention worth to us, right?
And I think.
And I, Nick, I'm with you on that. The only question I have is, is if you look at the long term, we know that every year, our benefit packages are gonna go up. That the insurance companies will have increases every single time. So then you're gonna get in with those increases. Then you're talking about these wages. So what happens down the road if we end up having to lay employees off? Is that, so now you're losing employees anyway.
Sure.
So that's all I'm saying is, is, as we look at this aggressiveness, and I agree, we've got to go somewhere. I'm just saying, let's, let's.
Ease into the pool.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's why I recommended what I did and didn't pop it back up to, you know, whatever it is.
Well, is there, I mean, looking in the crystal ball, if, if all these other cities are sitting in their city council meeting, having the same discussion we're having right now, and we just went up five percent, and they also went up five, we're in the same boat we were five minutes ago.
Said we need to look at it again when we do the budget, because it may happen that way.
But I think we need to be more aggressive right now, if we can. That's why I keep saying, Ken, cuz I.
If we can afford it.
I think we have to go higher than average. That's my vote.
So what I, what I'm hearing is the council very unified in supporting our employees. Very unified in being as aggressive as you possibly can at the lowest possible level. And then having a compression rate, um, you know, staggering it down as you go up, so that it accommodates. And, and yet, the aggressiveness decreases at, at every level until you get to a non-aggressive, which is our standard directors and, and above.
Yes. Amen.
Okay, can I say something?
You're the mayor, you can say whatever you want.
Permission granted.
I just don't wanna interrupt anybody, and I haven't had a chance. David kinda opened the door of my thoughts as well. First of all, I'd like to quote a good friend that said, why are we talking about Payson? Remember that? He said it a number of times. We ought to be our own city. We don't need to follow anybody. Number two, we need to take care of our employees. We have to. And I have a hard time, I look at this nineteen dollars an hour for a laborer, and I'm too old to. I started as a laborer for three dollars an hour, and I bought my first house, new house, three dollars an hour. So to see this kinda increases, it hurts. It hurts. It really does. That's where I, I look at this, and there's a big burden on our directors and supervisors to train and keep good employees because a high percentage, eighty percent, of what my company hires at nineteen dollars an hour are worthless. And I hate to say that. They just aren't worth what they're making. So I know Van Con spends more money on hiring and firing than they do on actually hiring employees, which is sad. By the time you train them, and then you find out their work ethic is, is worthless. You know, showing up to, it gets to the point where if they show up every day, you'll try and work with them. So. So I know it's way past what we're talking about here to try and get people to, to work anymore. But ultimately we've got to, we've got to up the game. We've got to do what we need to do to, to keep our, our people and keep, you know, uh, making it look, uh, enticing to those that are out there looking for a better job. So I agree with.
Mayor?
Yes.
So just to also be clear, we, we recognize this is one component of the overall retention, motivation, culture, you know? And so we definitely need to make sure we can entice people, get them through the door. But we've also started initiatives now with employees being involved in helping us look at our evaluation process. We had a, a wellness committee organized now from the employees, looking at how we can look at more well-rounded employees and their, not only the work life or their home life. We've had employees asking for additional trainings on, on finances. You know, what can we do to help employees with the finances side of things, communication, relations? And for the public, I know they're looking at these dollar figures like, oh, that's just more taxes, more taxes. And we recognize this is, this is one thing and we are trying to do everything else we can also to keep employees here. But this is definitely a big component that we need to be looking at.
Yeah, I think, I, I agree a hundred percent. I just think we're, we should have looked at this like six months ago, eight months ago. Not, not that it's a bad thing. We're looking at it now, but that's what's been happening, especially on the private side. Is these increases, these price increases are going up and everyone's affected by it. But I would not necessarily for now, unless you have the answer. But I would be interested to hear on the benefits, cause we talk about benefits. But I question how many of our employees take the full benefit? And how many of our employees under the age of twenty-six, twenty-seven take the benefits? Because that's the entry level position that I feel we're talking about is that age where they can get those benefits elsewhere. So we're saying benefits, benefits, benefits. But I don't know that they're necessarily taking them and us increasing the cost or them seeing the benefit of it itself.
They are not taking the benefits. If they're below the age of twenty-six, they're still on their parents.
Yeah.
Uh, even if they're married, they can each still be on their parents' insurance.
Which is insane to me.
And when they do not take the, the benefits, we pay them cash in lieu of taking the benefits. Because otherwise they would, they could double take, you know, their parents and, and us. So it's savings for us and savings for them. But maybe another area we're going to look is increasing the amount that we're giving to them. Cause otherwise if they were taking benefits, we'd be paying it anyway. People only leave for two reasons, because they're polled or they're pushed. And, and, uh, other cities like Salt Lake, um, they're struggling because they, they have so many issues. They're, they're on fire, if you will. And so they have to compensate. But I, I think we have a fantastic, uh, um, work environment and, and great employees. And I think the employees are generally speaking very happy. And everything that we're doing with wellness and, and, um, and evaluations and meeting with them more often and coaching and stuff and giving them a path, all of that's going to make it even a better working environment. But we can't rely on it, especially for our frontline employees, because at the end of the day, if they can't pay their bills, doesn't matter. They, they got it, you know, and, 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 you know, I'm, I'm certainly in a different situation than I was when I, you know, was, was newly married and out of college, you know, barely in college and all that kind of thing, trying to, to afford everything. And, and the bottom dollar was, was critical at that point and every penny counted. And that's where this whole, um, discussion is really coming from, to help us get some direction from you to prepare for the budget amendment. And we will, we will do so for the December fourteenth meeting, um, as conservatively as possible. But recognizing that the impact has to be felt by the frontline employees as aggressively as we can.
Sounds good.
Let me tell you about, let me tell you about the two best decisions I ever made. One was to ask Kim to marry me. The other one was I told my employer years ago, I would never leave his company as long as he wanted me. And that put his mind at ease and my mind at ease that I always would have a job. And I've never asked for a raise in my whole career. So I'm probably in the minority here on what I do, but.
Well, you're, you are from a generation, I'm, I'm not saying you're as old as my parents, cause you're not. But you're, but you're from a generation that was raised with a similar work ethic to my parents. When my mother started as a nurse, she had finished nursing school. She was a registered nurse. And her starting wage as a nurse was two dollars and five cents an hour. You, and after she had gone to school and got, gotten her, her license, right? And, um, and my parents didn't work for fun. They didn't work for entertainment. They worked to put food on the table and keep a roof over our heads. And they were very, very good at what they did and they got personal satisfaction out of doing a good job. And they didn't expect promotion. They didn't expect raises. They were grateful if, if those were offered, but they didn't expect them. And they still did their best because they got satisfaction out of that and felt like that was what would secure their position to continue to provide for themselves and their family is by doing a good job. And, um, it's a lot different now, unfortunately.
And, and I can at least speak for me. I'm not sure about, about you guys. I don't, I haven't had employees coming up to me or anything like that. But I have had employees telling me that, of the number of overtures that there being made. And, and, and that just plants seeds, you know, they're constantly being pulled. And, and we've, I think, done a great job not to push people, but we got to remove the sting from the pole. And if we can maintain the competitive nature, then that keeps people happy in here and part of our family. And that's really what it's all about.
Well, and I, I agree. And I think it goes back to exactly what Dennis was saying. That's the key is the stuff that you're working on outside of the money. The money's great. It's going to help us out. But that's the key right there. If they want to come to work and they want to be here, that's the good.
Yep, that's important.
Okay, we done? You got a direction?
I think yes. I'll go back and.
Okay. Thank you.
Get a dollar amount.
Good job, Shannon.
Do you want to go over anything on the agenda before we, okay. All right. We'll adjourn till seven o'clock. Thank you.